Okay, at um five thirty-five, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh before we get into our line item, we just want to recognize a new uh person who's in planning department. Would you approach the mic, Mr. Thomas? Got pressed the button. Helps us just plug in.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Thomas Gilbertson, the new Senior Planner with the Bureau of Planning Department of Community and Economic Development. I'll be primarily interfacing with the Land Bank Authority and Redevelopment Authority for the City of Lancaster. However, I have an involvement in a number of initiatives, including comprehensive plan implementation. Previously, I was working for the County of Crawford County up in Northwest Pennsylvania. So I've been here for about two and a half weeks now and very excited to be a part of this team.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Number two, the approval of minutes uh of the September the sixth twenty twenty-three meeting. Have enough members.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ready for the question, all in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it, motion carried. Three, subdivision and land development, A, two sixty-five uh twenty-eight demolition permit for ten Chesapeake Street.
Uh the Department of Public Work has requested a demolition permit prior to a final land development plan approval for the damaged timber building existing structure on the site uh at ten Chesapeake Street. And city staff recommend approving the request.
Okay. Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the request for demolition permit.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the demolition, ready for the question, all in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it, motion carried. We'll move to item C, Thaddeus Stevens College Community Learning Center, four twenty South Broad Street.
Mister Chairman, Thaddeus Stevens College is proposing a new community learning center located at four twenty South Broad Street. The proposed project includes construction of two community, a two-story community learning center with associated parking, accessways, utility connection, and stormwater management facility. We have Hunt Engineering Company is here to present the project to to you.
Hello, here we go. All right, what Mondali has brought up is the proposed site plan.
Excuse me, sir, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is James Eater, I'm with Hunt Engineering Company, and we're the civil consultant on this project, it's a DGS project. So uh this is a site that there's an existing maintenance building for that was used by Parks and Rec for years right about where the proposed parking lot is. Uh we're gonna obviously demolish that building, put in a new parking lot, new two-story community learning center. Um at the north end of the parking lot, we're gonna have an underground stormwater management system, all the rain, all the runoff will be directed to that system. Uh we have the new driveway, we've adjusted the driveway location a little bit so that it's directly across from the uh driveway to the park on the other side of the road. And uh you know, on top of that, we're proposing brand-new um uh utility connections. As part of this project, just north of the proposed driveway, there's an existing crosswalk, went across mid-block crosswalk. Uh we're gonna put a new handicap ramp on our side of that to match up with the handicap ramp on the other side. Um on at the upper level of, you can see there's a connection to the existing Griner Campus. Uh we're gonna put a new handicap ramp there to maintain handicap access between uh the Griner Campus and the proposed building. And you can see we have landscaping per the uh per the code, we're still working with Mondali's group on finalizing some of those things. Uh but we think we're really close. And I also have the architect, Mike Thompson, from KCBA, if you have any questions about the building itself.
Can you please also provide us with the the reason that you're asking for modifications, especially for construction security?
Yes, uh the construction security is, uh this is a DGS project, a state project, and the state does not have a uh a mechanism in place to post like a letter of credit or a financial security like that. Uh so what we've done on other DGS projects, many other DGS projects, is they provide a letter, uh in this case to the City of Lancaster, and states that this is fully funded by an act of state legislature. And on top of that, the contractor who selected has to post a bond for a hundred percent of the construction cost. So there's no chance that the uh that this won't actually be finished, it's fully funded and there's a bond on top of that. Uh some of the other waivers, um the code calls for a four-foot strip between the curb and sidewalk. Uh fortunately, the existing sidewalk, as as Mondali's pointing out there, is right up to the curb. Uh so for that reason, we have to ask for a um uh modification uh so that we don't have to put that four-foot wide strip in because there's no place to put it. Um as part of that, uh the state is gonna provide access to the city, so if they need to go in there and inspect and maintain, uh that'll still be uh that they'll still be able to do that. Um some of the other modifications, um uh I think we had, we talked about the financial security, we talked about the the trees. Yeah, thank you, Mondali. Oh, right, we're asked for a a modification to waive the required for preliminary plan, uh we talked about the guarantee. Um the code asks for existing features to be uh shown for the entire tract. Uh we're only developing a small portion of the entire tract, most of it is the uh the Griner Campus, which has just recently been built and was approved land development. So for that reason, and we are showing all the topography and existing features within our area development, and the rest of the site is a recently constructed and approved uh Griner Campus. Um we asked for a waiver of the flood, for the need for a floodplain impact study because the floodplain literally encroaches just a tiny amount where the uh the proposed driveway is, and we are actually lowering the grades in those areas, so there would be, even though there's only a small amount of floodplain that actually encroaches onto the uh on the site, we wouldn't impede that at all. And in fact, most of the construction that's within the uh the floodplain was requested by the city and is associated with replacing some curb and sidewalk and with putting that um the new uh handicap rant that we talked about that was just north of that. Um we talked about the street trees, in addition to a waiver of the location, we may need a modification for the number. If there is a modification, then Thaddeus Stevens will be, of course, paying the associated fee for that. And that's all the modifications that we're requesting at this time.
I have a question, my name is Heidi. I feel like we had a, the school was in here recently with a proposal for some other development residential units. Is that, where's this in connection or relation to that?
We have somebody from the college here.
Uh it's actually across the street.
Yeah.
You can't see it on there, but it's where the old Shell Recycling Center used to be, I'm Gene Duncan with the college.
You mean south?
Nelson and I, we've been in the city more than all of you put together, but.
You're saying across the street, south or?
South, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just a follow-up, this really is a promise that the college made to the neighborhood years ago. This this is going to be a daycare STEM center, maker's spot. It will be used probably ninety percent or better by the community, not by the college.
Are there questions for the?
Great.
Thanks. Mondali, do you want to bring up the uh the artist's rendering, just to give some idea of what the building will look like? Yeah, there you go. So if you have any questions, obviously I'll direct those to Mike, but I just figured to bring that up to give you an idea of what this building's gonna look like.
Great.
Mister Chairman, city staff also recommend approving the final land development plan for four twenty South Broad Street with the requested modifications subject to the following conditions. The final plan and related construction document must comply with all city codes and standards unless specifically modified or waived by the city. The developer shall work with the city on license agreement or a memo of understanding in lieu of easement. The opinion of probable cause of O P C shall be submitted and accepted by the city. The developer shall address to the city satisfaction all unsatisfied comment per review letter dated September twenty-nine. The developer shall secure the sheetroot commissions approval. Secure the zoning hearing board approval.
Yes, sir.
The approval of NPDS permit. The developer shall pay in lieu of required tree. The approved plan and related agreement shall be recorded in the Office of Recorder of Deeds.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we're, before the zoning hearing board tomorrow, by the way, we just need a special exception for the daycare use.
I assume they meet the criteria for the special exception? Just checking.
Yep, I understand.
Any further questions from the Commission? From the public?
Sorry, Mister Polite, um not so much a question, uh I definitely recognize, and I'm not gonna oppose the modification for a floodplain impact study, um but you know, floodplanes do shift, and uh one of my big pet peeves is how pedestrians sometimes get caught up in massive puddles and whatnot. So um to whatever extent possible, I just encourage you to look at what can be done to mitigate those effects when storm events do occur.
Well, one of the things we're doing is the stormwater management system that we're providing on this is significantly reducing the uh post-developed discharge rates for every storm event, and a large quantity of runoff iron, which now just runs into the street, will be captured and will be infiltrated there.
Right, I I wasn't so much worried about your onsite things, more how the offsite stuff can impact you.
Well, that eventually goes to the the uh the street, the stream that's just a couple hundred feet away, so it, you know, in some small way, it does reduce the impact, so. And I I don't know if I was clear on this, that you're talking about pedestrian, almost the entire floodplain that's on our site is just the existing sidewalk and, you know, just slightly. It's it's literally right at, right at the the edge of our property there, right at the edge of the right of way.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Mister Polite, um which which of Kelsey or I is now the member, because we have six and two alternates?
Just a question.
Oh, I can do it, okay, all right, that was the question, just determining which alternate is the member tonight.
You're in.
I make a motion to recommend conditional approval based on the six conditions listed in the waiver, or the six waiver and modification request and the nine conditions listed by the city.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, ready for the question. All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it, motion carried. Congratulations, I'm really happy to hear about the building that in particular is gonna serve the community, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, we're hoping it goes out the bid very soon, we just, conservation just was a little backed up, so we're, it's taken a while to get that approval, but we're hoping very soon they'll they'll, we'll be putting this out the bid and it'll be started maybe the end of the year, beginning of next year, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you again, folks. Mondali, is there anything we need to talk about tonight before we go? Is there anything you'd like to talk about before tonight? Okay, great, thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move back to item uh C, B rather. Time extension request for two thirteen College Avenue Final Land Development Plan.
Mister Chairman, on behalf of the property owner, a developer, side design concept company is a consultant has requested an eight-month time extension to finalize all conditions of the planning commission conditionally approved approved plan for two thirteen College Ave. The plan was conditionally approved by the planning commission on September twenty-first of last year. And city plan, uh city staff recommends approving their request.
You say eight months?
Eight months.
I would like to move to allow the project at two thirteen College Avenue to extend for an additional eight months. Oh, sorry.
Public comment?
Hi, Michaela Allwyn, six hundred block of West Chestnut Street. Four days ago, on the thirtieth, we received a letter from Benchmark Construction letting us know that in order to construct this building in a safe manner, which that's all it says, they would have to dig out six feet of my backyard and nine feet of my next-door neighbor's backyard. And I have a lot of questions about that, they didn't elaborate on what safely means, is that safe for the the project? Is it safe for our homes, which are only about fifteen to twenty feet from that six-foot line? I was very upset and confused as to why this wasn't disclosed previously, as we've been talking about this project for years at this point. What they said was that they would need to excavate our backyards in order to safely construct the foundation walls. So again, questions came up about what if there was maintenance in the future with those foundation walls? What happens then, are they coming back to excavate my property again? What happens if we don't grant permission for this excavation of a quarter of my of my backyard? I have two babies right now, and they're proposing over six months of a hole in my backyard. I have a lot of questions, and I would request that you, as the planning commission, can find out some of these answers, as this is, you know, very new information that has not been presented to the community, let alone me as the property owner, that I'm gonna have destruction and damage to my personal property in order to build this safely. I'm most concerned about what safely means, what does what does that mean, can they not build this safely unless they dig out my backyard? I, we need to know that. So I am requesting that, you know, you as the planning commission, get this information and 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 require that it's made public because I've maintained this entire time that we're very concerned about safety because the building is so close to our homes. Um and this is just another, yet another unsafe, um you know, proposal with this with this construction, and so I'm just very concerned. So I really just, I'm asking you with all of my might that I can muster, that we get the answers to this. Again, what does safety mean? If if we're not willing to have our backyards dug up, are they able to safely build this building? If we say no to this, are we then liable for any issues that happen because we, you know, under their eyes, didn't agree to do it safely? I'm I'm just very confused getting this letter, and I'm happy to share it with anybody that has, that wants to see how it was written or that wants, you know, elaboration on this, but again, please make sure this is part of the planning process as to, you know, how it interacts with the surrounding buildings, community. I would really, you know, implore you to get some answers on that, thank you.
I got a, I got a question for you, Ms. Allwyn, and before I ask that question, I will say for the sake of Robert's rules of order, if no one's seconded that motion to open public comment, I'm gonna second that motion. My question for you is, where they're doing this excavation, is this the area where there was the conversation about an alleyway?
Yes, so I have a diagram of where they would be excavating on my yard and my next-door neighbor's yard. They want to remove our fences, dig six feet into my yard, which we've got trees in there, we've got plants, I mean, aside from the safety stuff, there's our yard. But yes, I believe it's from the, so where my yard is, there's twelve feet to where the building starts, so it would be that twelve-foot alley, grass alleyway, and then into my yards for six feet and into my neighbor's yard for nine.
And did the letter, because we're mentioning fences, trees, things that have value, did the letter mention anything of how you, as property owners, would face that dilemma, like, is it just they're removing everything and it's, sorry, we had to do it?
Yeah, I mean, they do, it does say that they would replace what they destroy, but I'm wondering how you replace mature trees.
Money?
If, that hasn't been the case so far as the proposal, so I'm just, you know, there are other trees in the site, I'm not gonna get into all of that, but there are other trees in the site that their proposal has been to just cut down and not replace, so I'm not super optimistic that that would be returned to the actual condition of a fully grown tree, but it does say in the letter that they would restore the yard.
I mean, I.
Like we have patios and pa, like it's a pathway and pa, you know, it's.
I hope that the developer does compensate you guys for your trees at an appraised value, I I know you're shaking your head.
That hasn't, that has been said that they would not.
Oh, it's been said that they would not?
Yes. To other neighbors, not to me, because this is, again, I just got this four days ago.
Do you have extra copies of that letter that you could?
I just have this one, I, I, okay, I don't have copies, but I'm happy to send a copy, I mean, I have all my notes on it at this point, but I, I can't, yes.
Do we, was there any knowledge?
No, I don't have any knowledge prior to what you said, yeah.
Is that something that is typically required to disclose to the planning commission and/or the city if they plan on getting into surrounding properties?
I think building construction is dealt by the building department, it's not by planning commission nor by planning staff.
Okay.
So I I need to go back to the structural engineer to see the structability of of this building.
Are there public meetings for that process?
Well, this is engineering staff, I I don't think it's open to public. And we have a developer representative here, and if you would like to.
Get those questions answered if possible, thank you.
Yes, Bernadette Hoanatal from Nicholson Hoanatal. If you have concerns, I do believe that the letter from Benchmark suggested if you had questions or comments, if you would like to have a meeting scheduled that we can discuss all of this, please contact us and let us know that that's what you want to do. I have not been advised by Benchmark, who was the contractor, that any request was made for a meeting, but I'm sure they're more than willing to come out there, meet with you. The letter advised that there may have to, there would have to be possibly some excavation on their properties. Whatever was done, the fence would be removed, a temporary fence would be located so as to protect the properties from the excavation. Following completion of the work, the properties would be returned to the condition in which they existed. Prior to the work being done, a new fence would be put in for the property owners that would be affected by this. So. Well, I think in order to, they have to excavate to get down to the base, or to the basement foundation walls of that. In order for it to be safe for that excavation, you have to have a certain slope so that the excavation is not too, yeah, so you would have a certain slope that would have to go out, is my understanding of it.
Mondali, I have a question. So I wondered if this was in the original plan, that they expected this to happen during this building process?
No, it was not until such time as they got in there and they determined what had to be done and how it had to be done and the best mechanism by which to do it, that this was discovered.
So it's about the contractor, you know, when when he's bidding to construct the building, so he will look at the details, how he will construct it. Those information are are absent from us in the initial planning review, we we don't know the constructability of of the building, how the contractor will, this will, will deal with the site, you know.
When the building plans are reviewed, the city engineer will be reviewing the plans, and I'm sure has already been reviewing the plans, and.
There is no building permit yet, so. There is no building permit yet, so after the, after we record the plan, then the building permit will be issued. Right now, the question is, before the commission is to extend for eight months and whether we can move the discussion about this topic to the public comments or if you would like to-
And I was going to say, all we're here about is the extension, which we hope is not anywhere close to eight months. We're hoping that it is much quicker than that, but we are at the mercy of the processes of PHFA and that is what has been causing the delays so far in terms of being able to close on the project.
I think the extension will help addressing, is your point.
So, no. So with all of that being said, Michaela, I would like to amend the motion that this is investigated further by the engineer to determine before we were given approval for an eight month extension and exactly what that eight month extension date might be.
But if we refuse to extend that, then maybe the contractor will start working then or maybe he will start recording the plan. So I think extending the request, approving the request will help you, will help the developer to address your comment.
I got a question. When is the current timeline, like, what's the deadline that the extension's being put in for, Ms. Hoanodle? Do you know that date?
Whatever eight months would be from-
From like today or now?
Yes, from September, yeah.
From September. Well, it was also aimed for May, it was aimed for June, it was aimed for July. Well, that is not getting pushed back. I've said, let's talk about this, okay? The extension is something really different than meeting with the contractor and talking about how construction is going to happen and we can arrange that.
Sorry if I- I mean, those are regulated by both regulation, by zoning, it's not by planning. So how close is the building to adjacent property? Those are managed by, administered by zoning, not by planning.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm, and this is not, I'm not answering anything. I just wanted to say, if we could all come to the mic a little bit more for these things, like all comments, I would like that, thank you.
Your concerns are not totally related to the extension, okay? The extension, we have a conditional approval. That approval is subject to, I forget how many, somewhere between eight and 12 conditions. We are in the process of meeting those conditions but are delayed in doing so because of financing issues with agencies and organizations that we're dealing with. If we meet those conditions, the plan can be recorded. We are just asking for an additional amount of time within which to satisfy those conditions. In the meantime, and I'm making the representation on behalf of the developer, we will meet with you. We will talk about your concerns with this. We will have the contractors there so they can explain it to you, explain exactly how it's done and answer your questions.
I have a question.
More approach to the mic? Go ahead.
Maybe you can answer this. Is an easement or a legal agreement needed for that kind of intrusion on somebody's property?
Permission would be yes.
So you need some sort of permission? You cannot just-
We just can't, no, no, we can't do it, no. That's why the letter was sent to advise them of it and at this point, they have questions and we are willing to address those questions.
What happens if you don't get that permission? Would you need to make a modification to the plan?
That would be something the contractor would have to answer for you. That's well beyond my purview, but it may entail them coming up with some other means of doing the work that they have to do. And that's something that we can address with the residents in a meeting with them.
Yeah, it sounds like you were mentioning it's because of the depth, so basically the slope is required to ensure that the soil doesn't kill somebody if it were to collapse, if there were soil.
Well, I mean, it would be reinforced and whatever while the work is going on, but yes.
Right. So like, it's possible that if permission isn't given, there are other ways of securing those loads, but just generally, I mean, I'm sitting up here kind of uncomfortable about this discussion because the alleyway was a concern of mine when it was brought forward last time and now the alleys come into play with the encroachment of potentially, well, not encroachment because permission is needed of private property rights. This whole thing, it seems like a mess and it doesn't seem like there's as much collaboration between those adjacent neighbors, soon to be neighbors potentially, as I would like to see as a planning commissioner. So that's where my head is at right now. I understand things can't always be determined in the moment, but I feel like the relationship that has been fostered between the residents through this project is part of the hostility. Like, there's been a lot of community discussion for and against and obviously I want to see affordable housing, but I do not like this dynamic.
That's your choice.
I would like to remind that commission that the scope of the request is time extension and please let's make our comments related to time extension.
Well, my concern with a time extension is a continued negative force driving in through this project. Like, that's where my concern about a time extension is.
So we can move the discussion to the public comments.
Okay, that's fine. Are you going to make a determination on the extension and we'll have this in the public comments or?
Yes.
Okay.
So do I need to withdraw my motion to amend?
Do you have the criteria that they have to meet that they're getting the extension on so that we can see it?
The conditions?
Yeah, the conditions.
The planning commission conditions of approval?
Yeah, do you have those so that we can just make-
You know, my computer PC is connected to the projector. I can give it to you right now, but after the meeting, I can't.
Well, it had nothing to do with what our concerns are this evening. It had to do with providing the biking, bike park spaces. It had to do with recording the plans. It had to do with entering into an appropriate parking arrangement for the offside parking that was approved. It had to do with the O and M agreement, the developer agreement with the city. It just, you're pretty much your standard conditions.
I can bring these comments again under the public comments.
Okay.
Any other further public comment?
Mr. Commissioner, just a note that I will recuse myself from this vote and so now Tony and Kelsey will both be active.
Mandali, I have a question about how conditional approvals work. So it's being brought forward for the time extension, is it possible to add another condition?
I have to go back to the city solicitor, but I don't think it's, it's going to work on this way.
Okay. Okay. Any other public comment? Is the public, want to make a comment about the extension in particular?
Hi, I'm Michelle LaGrassa, 663 West Chestnut Street. We own the property that backs to this particular development. We've expressed our concerns to the planning commission, the zoning commission, city council before, feeling that the developer and everyone involved has not been transparent in regards to this project. This, of course, is just another example of that lack of transparency. I believe the planning commission has an obligation, whether you agree or not, in regards to granting additional time. They still have an obligation. They are now looking to cut into yards, which could affect things structurally, which changes, at least from my solicitor is telling me, my attorney, changes what was approved initially in the planning commission. So you're looking to grant an extension for the original plan, however, that is now changed and it's obvious based on this letter and based on their diagrams that you're more than welcome to see, that the intent of that has changed as they need access to secure basement foundation walls from a different angle to make it safe. This should have been disclosed. I'm sorry and I'm not here to get in an argument. This is for public comment and this is the frustration of the neighbors of complete lack of transparency. And here's just another example. And we've looked to you all along to represent our interests and you have not done so. Thank you.
I would like to add that any change to the approved plan will be reviewed again by city staff and city engineer.
So you're saying that you don't trust that you'll be able to meet with the developer and have a discussion about the situation? You don't trust that?
We don't trust them in general, how's that?
Okay.
This is just one more example, if that makes sense? Of the distrust and the lack of transparency. It's been since day one. So this is just another example. And we've been in front of you time and time again, telling you on the record that there's been a lack of transparency and now they're down to the 23rd hour and there's even more lack of transparency.
Ms., yes.
Good evening. Bill Hannigan, 300 block of College Avenue. I'd like to say that my question about this transparency issue and this delay are as strong as theirs. And just by comparison, the developer, Washington Place Equities, came to the planning commission with a proposal that as of December-ish of 2022, identified plans for 160 units, two floors of parking and thousands of feet of commercial space. That Washington Place Equities person, Mr. Weicker, I believe, wrote a letter to the planning commission and within two months, got major concessions on that plan. No longer did he have 160, but now maybe 185 units of residential space in the former hospital. No longer did he have retail space of 7,000 feet, if I remember off the top of my head. It was now reduced to some fraction of that and was not disclosed. And I stood before this committee and I complained the next time this committee met, commission met, and I said, never discussed in public was the issue of removing a floor of parking from within that hospital building, reducing two floors of parking to one. That's the level of distrust I have for Washington Place Equities and I can only say that it appears to be the case that this party, West Chestnut Street residents, can argue in the same way, that they have not heard of something of this, which is an intrusion, until this late date. So if this commission can turn around concessions in two months and not talk about all the measures that were conceded and then Washington Place Equities walks off with a sweeter deal to fatten their bottom line, well, here again, we find a developer perhaps not revealing in a timely way and for whatever reason, trying to take away more of what the community envisioned the project to involve. Thank you for your time.
Mandali, with all due respect, I think we have, I feel as if we have an obligation to sort of protect city residents in these circumstances to the best of our ability. And just hearing what is happening outside of the original plan and being reminded by this gentleman of that change in that plan, going from two floors of parking to not having the retail space and having one floor of parking, one level of parking. As I presented a motion to amend the previous, the initial motion to approve the extension, I still feel as if so, if I present an amendment, that we not approve the extension until we know that transparent communication has occurred with the community and with our engineer, city staff and the like. Until we hear from that, I am not comfortable to vote that they get an extension because within that time of getting an extension, they could move forward and residents kind of miss a timeframe of making their concerns heard.
Sorry, you said that within that time, they may move forward doing what?
Digging up the-
They cannot, they don't have a permit to do so.
Okay.
They don't have permit. Any deviation from the approved plan needs to be reviewed and vetted again by city engineers and city planner and staff. They don't have a permit to do so. So I can guarantee you that nothing will happen before city being informed about that. They don't have a recorded plan yet.
So in addition to that, I would think that they have a different plan besides digging up yard space of current residents, Mandali.
One, the developer of 213 College Avenue is not Washington Place. It's housing, it's HDC. They're different projects. They're all part of a phase of redevelopment of that part of the city, but they're different developers, different timelines. The plan for 213 College Avenue has remained the same. What we're talking about here is how they go about performing the work. They haven't changed the building, they haven't changed height, anything. It's how they go about constructing that building. Those are issues that are addressed, as Mandali said, by the city engineer. They will be looked at by planning staff as well and we have to go through the process of getting our permits before we can do this. The plans are not changed. It's the manner of how those plans are carried out that we're talking about now.
My point, my point is that these developers, builders and engineers for the city should be able to come up with an alternative plan to, instead of having to deconstruct someone's property.
Well, and that's why I have said, we will meet with them. We will talk about alternatives, if there are alternatives.
What leverage, what leverage do they have? You're saying there's a meeting?
We will have a meeting. No one has requested a meeting. That was an initial contact with the property owners to advise that it is-
And in that letter, they suggested a meeting in the letter?
It says that they have questions to contact and we are more than willing to meet with them. I will say that we're more than willing to meet with them.
Was that contact made or not? Or you didn't have time? I don't know. Okay.
And so no contacts were made and we're more than willing to have, to make contact. And if I can about the whole question of transparency, you know how many public meetings we've been at? You know how many community meetings have happened for this project? I think the number is 18, okay? So transparency is not really a concern. So transparency is not really a concern, okay?
Having 18 meetings and what you share in those meetings are two different things?
No. Our plans have been shared every time we had any sort of a change in the project, which I will admit, there were prior to approval. There was public dissemination of information as to all of that.
My concern is still about the deconstructing of city resident...
Yeah, we will meet with them and talk about it. And we will discuss, to the extent it's needed, the contractors will be discussing that with the city engineer.
And we have a consultant who's working for us for site inspection, so they will be looking at the plan as well.
So my concern, like, my concern still remains, to put it in a different word, the collaborative nature of this project. My worry with this project is that because of the situation we're in right now, this debate, this discussion, it's one of these things that makes it, that gives affordable housing a bad rap. Like, I want to know from your perspective, Ms. O'Natal, why, why I might feel that way? Why might I feel like this is not a collaborative effort with the community around?
I can't answer that. I don't know why you feel that way, because I feel that, and I know that you participated in some of the meetings, which due to conditions beyond our control at that time, were virtual meetings. And I know you did participate in some of them that we had. We have had meetings as to the plans. We've had zoning, planning, all sorts of public, this type of forum meetings. I don't know why you feel that way about it. I can't answer that.
All right.
I mean, it's a good project. They are a good developer. They have a good reputation in this community for the projects that they develop and they manage. And I don't quite understand a lot of the negativity. We have throughout all of this, always been open to meeting, always been open to talking.
I think part of, and I'll answer my own question. I was just curious what you would say. I think part of why I feel that way is, one, not your fault, there are multiple developers around this site at play here. There's multiple projects, which can tarnish your reputation, even though it might not be your project. But on the other end of things, I'm hearing a lot about being open to talking, but I'm not necessarily feeling as though that this bridge is being built. Like, I do understand the public meetings are being had. Public meetings are great. I love them. I'm an advocate for them. But my philosophies on planning do go a little bit deeper than what the law is. And I'll just leave it at that. That's why I don't feel this collaborative nature, and I'm worried about how this project may tarnish the reputation of other affordable housing projects in Laxer City going forward. Those are just my statements. I don't even need a response to that. I'm still curious, though, when is the current deadline for this project that you need this time extension for? What is that date? Because personally, right now, the way I feel, I do not feel comfortable voting yes to a time extension.
Do you want to answer that?
So it's going to be June next year?
Repeat that again?
May, May next year.
So if we deny it, it would be May next year? If we allow it?
No, if we allow it, it's going to be May next year.
Okay, so if we deny it, when is the deadline then?
Then they stop.
It's already over.
It's over.
Okay, so that's helpful clarity. And do we have any other options on the table besides approving and denying? Like, can we table it? Are there any other things we could do?
I think we can table it, yeah.
I would like to make an amendment to table this, so that we can have, like, so we as the Commission can each do our own little digging into whatever we want to look into, and so that the residents here can have a meeting with the developer. I would like to table it so that your options are still open, but I wouldn't feel comfortable voting yes right now.
And what does tabling it do? Does that hit pause for you? Does it give you time to connect with residents? Like, I don't, I don't understand what tabling would do, so I want to make sure if that is where we want to go, it buys us two more weeks, or what does it do?
I'm not sure what tabling will do at all. That wouldn't be accomplished by just granting the extension.
I think I suggest that we grant the extension condition to the developer have an open discussion with the neighbors and also engaging the city with this conversation.
Question, if we deny it and they want to proceed with the project, would they have to start from ground zero? What's that?
I really, I have no, I don't know. I can't answer that question. Yeah.
Because it's like their timeline to meet these conditions.
Yes, but the issue is zoning. I don't know what's the expression of zoning decision. They could retain the zoning decision.
But they would have to probably present to us again and get approval.
As a planning, yeah.
Could we extend for two months? Is there, do we have to do eight months?
We just said, I mean...
I don't know.
We could do two months. We could do three months. We don't want, you know, in the event, and a lot of what's going on is beyond our control in terms of being able to close on this project. We put in an amount of time in that would allow for that to happen if those delays continue to be beyond our control. If you, you know, we asked for eight months. Do you want it to be six months? We could make it six months. You know, you can make it two months, but then if the forces that have to weigh in on all of this and be involved in the closing on the financing are not ready in two months, then we're back here again, you know? So the eight months is to give us time to work with those agencies that we need to be working with. And also will give us the time to have a meeting with the neighbors.
Can you have a meeting within two months? That's the question.
With the neighbors?
Yes.
I'm hoping we can have it within two weeks.
Okay, I'm hoping too, but...
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like, they don't feel confident about that at all.
Well, I don't know why they don't feel confident about it. Throughout this entire process, we have offered always to meet with them. At times, because of proceedings that were going on, our hands were tied in that we couldn't deal with them directly. We had to deal with their legal representation. And so that sort of put a damper on things for a while. But throughout this entire process, we have always, always expressed our interest in talking with them and meeting with them.
Can I ask you a question just about the...
Could you approach the mic, please?
So while the, Landa, while this conditional approval is granted, so either to now or to eight months from now, are changes, can there be changes to the plans that go directly to the city staff that aren't made public, so that public wouldn't have this kind of forum to, you know, have feedback on that? Or does any change have to be made public?
So if the changes are substantial, we could bring that change to the Planning Commission again?
Could, could. It depends.
Could.
See, that's what we're afraid of, you know?
You're making it sound like we're going to go out there and completely build a different building. We have represented, no, we're not. We are building the building that has been presented to you. The method of building is subject to discussion.
If the changes are substantial, we will bring it to the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
If the changes are substantial.
Yeah.
May I make another comment about what we're looking at tonight is extending the timeframe for them to finalize all conditions. The conditions that I'm seeing here from September's meeting include things such as construction guarantees, development plan complying with city ordinances and standards, barriers such as a gate to be installed, tree protection, et cetera, parking lease agreements, wall packs, lighting, bike parking, survey pins, shade commission. This is, these are what we, the, these are the conditions that we put on them, and that's what we're, that's what we're, my understanding, is that's what we're looking to give them an extension to meet those conditions. Not a drawing of the building.
Not a drawing.
So I just want to clarify, that's my understanding?
Correct.
Construction document is a different document.
Okay.
We are not approving construction document.
Right.
Land Development Plan is not a construction document.
But you are correct. That's all we're asking here.
Again, Mr. Chairman, really, we need to move on to, if there is any public comment, we would like to make it under the public comment. We have an item in the agenda. It's public comments, because there is another project we would like to...
I understand, and I appreciate their patience. I just heard tree protection. And here I'm thinking about what is being brought into discussion tonight is about encroachment on their properties. And I feel that's possibly only because it's a cheap way to go about buttressing this construction and the plan that's been approved, but that seems to be the cheap way to go about it. Cut into their yard, then we come back and we dig what we need to dig, and we build what we need to build, and then we restore it. That's not tree protection in my mind, and it seems like a cheap way out. If there's a way out, it would probably be way more expensive than that approach, but maybe that's what we need here. Thank you.
So it appears as though it's not that the, you know, the building was approved to be built, so that's not the issue, but it's how and how invasive it's going to be to the neighbors. That's really the issue.
Which is not related to the extension to meet the conditions.
Exactly, I understand that. You know, but what leverage or guarantee, you know, do they have in relationship to this meeting? And...
My representation, and as an officer of the court, my representations that I made, I'm bound by, okay? The representations of Mandali that the city staff and engineer are still going to review this, and until they review it and approve it, we don't get building permits. And we don't get building permits, we can't build the building.
I'm going to put forward the amendment to put this on the table for a month, and someone can second it or it can die, but that's what I'm going to say.
I know I brought that up, Tony, but I don't think it actually accomplishes anything, because there isn't much that we as the Planning Commission can do about the concerns, other than have this discussion. I think our options are deny, tank the project. We can do that tonight.
We can.
Yeah, I think we could table it and ask to see if there is any way that we can ask the solicitor, if there's an additional condition we could put in. I don't know that that's going to be effective.
I don't know either. I just want to give basically a third option instead of potentially tanking the whole project.
Yeah, that was my hope with the tabling, too, but unless there is actually something that would be able to be put in the conditions from the Planning Commission.
No. No.
For this request?
Yeah.
All right, that died on the floor.
Like, can we table it and see if we could talk to the city solicitor?
That's really why I'd like to know.
My point is that we have very clear request, time extension. What the neighbors are concerning about is constructability of the building, which is not under our purview. We don't have any building specialist here to weigh in and review the contractor document to see what's the best way to construct the foundation. This is managed and administered by building officials in the city, not by us. So my suggestion, suggestion is, a recommendation to approve the time extension. Within eight months, I think we can solve all the outstanding issues with the neighbors.
So they would have opportunity to meet with who in particular? Go ahead.
It would be representatives of HDC, our contractor, and the neighbors.
And also the city.
And the city, yes.
I just have one little simple question.
You got to come to the mic.
I'm done. My question is for Mrs. O'Natal. Were you aware of the letters that were sent out?
Yes.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Were you aware of the letters that were sent out from Benchmark? Because at the beginning of this, you said you were not aware.
No, 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 no. No, I didn't say I was not aware. I knew the letters went out. I never said I wasn't aware.
Mandali, I just want it to be known that the reason why I'm so, I understand this is more of a constructability thing. The reason why it gets to me is because at the last meeting where this was brought up, I felt shut down about my concerns about the alley, and I feel as though those concerns had been hashed out a little bit more, we wouldn't be here now. And that's why I can understand the sentiments coming to us right now, because in that moment, I basically was just like, okay, but it's still at our discretion to approve or deny certain things, in that case, the alley. And that's where I'm coming from in this moment.
Is there a way to add an additional condition that would address this, such as, like, during construction, not encroaching on neighboring properties? Or can we add conditions at this point, or is it not something that we could do?
No.
Can't do that.
I already don't know. Is that the legal aspect of that? Because if you're conditioning something, it's out of purview of planning.
Right.
You can put anything then.
Okay. No, you can't add conditions on a conditional approval now.
Right. It's just eight months.
My suggestion to neighbors is meet, give calls to the city engineers and, as well, I don't know if you've done that yet.
Any other public comment?
Can we have time extension for two months?
How long?
For two months.
Two?
Extending our conditional approval for two months?
Is it enough for you?
I hope it will be, but I can't guarantee that, because it's, you know, PHFA is not an organization over which I can control.
Well, then I hope it is, because I'm going to make an amendment. I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion that we grant a two-month time extension. That's the last whatever I'm going to amend at this point, but that's what I'm going to say.
Okay. If you're only going to give us two months, then we got to do it in two months.
That would be my suggestion.
Does anyone want to second that motion for a two-month time extension amendment?
I'll second that motion, and I know that the Planning Commission has no jurisdiction, but I would highly encourage you to come back to Planning Commission when you get the building permits or somewhere in the process and give us an update.
We'll come back and give you an update, yeah, sure. You know, you'll be able to know what's going on, because you'll see what's going on, and you'll see how the process is going forward.
How? But this is a venue for folks who know and care about the community, so I think, obviously we can't bind you to anything, but I think, given the amount of comments that we've had here, it would be great to hear something in the future.
Okay. The HDC also puts out, I think, every two weeks. So lately, there hasn't been any news to put in it, but during the planning process and then probably during the construction process, they put out a public information, like an email they send out on the progress of things.
We have a motion on the floor to extend for two months and also a second. Ready for the question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, one opposed, ayes have it. Motion carried.
Thank you. And do you want more public comment, or I think you've probably had enough?
Well, we...
You might want to stick around.
We're done.
You want me to stick around? Okay.
Oh, the paper? The final land development for 759 Manor Street Manor Youth House.
Mr. Chairman, Community Basics, the equitable owner of 759 Manor Street, is proposing to construct a three-story building with six single occupancy rooms, three one-bedroom apartments, and a small office. The use of the building will be a youth homeless shelter for young adult, age 18 to 25. Harbor Engineering Project Consultant has requested the following modification and waiver to SADO. The first one is preliminary plan submission procedure, survey monuments, curbs on sidewalk, and trees.
Good evening. Steve Gergli with Harbor Engineering. I'm also here with Lauren Riley and Lisa Greener from Community Basics and Tanya Millet from Architectural Concepts. Yeah, this is a land development plan for a three-story building. It'll have nine total dwelling units. The purpose of this building is a youth homeless shelter. It's got a special exception approval from the zoning hearing board. This is a permitted use by special exception in the C2 commercial urban zoning district. And the purpose of this, Community Basics is building this building, and it'll have six single rooms and three one-bedroom apartments. And the intent is, it is to be for youth and young people aging out of foster care, just transitional housing between ages 18 and 25 years old. There'll be an office for life, life skills coaching and support, and there's a common area associated with the building as well. There is a former structure on this building that was demolished. It's currently owned by the Lancaster City, or the City of Lancaster Redevelopment Authority. And then, as Mandali mentioned, Community Basics is the equitable owner of the property. So this land development plan shows the proposed building footprint. It'll be set up against Manor Street. It also has frontage onto Crystal Avenue. There are two parking spaces proposed from Crystal. Currently, there's an existing gravel area that's, it's basically the back portion of the property is all gravel to Crystal Avenue, so that'll be cleaned up a little bit. And two paved parking spaces will be installed, including a handicap parking space and ADA accessible route to the building. And then the frontage on the Manor Street will include a street tree and reconstruction of the curb and sidewalk, as well as new utilities into the site. We have been to the shade tree commission. They recommended approval of the street tree on Manor Street, and they understood that we're asking for a modification for a street tree on Crystal Avenue because there's no room to plant one with the parking spaces in the width of the lot. So the condition of that approval, should it be granted, is that the applicant will pay a fee in lieu of one street tree. Stormwater management is going to be handled underground with a below-ground subsurface infiltration bed in the rear yard and underneath a portion of the parking area. This will also go to the historical commission, I believe, on October 16th. So they've had preliminary conversations, so they're confident that their design will be more or less approved, but that official approval and action will be on the 16th. So that said, we are asking for a few modifications. As Mandali had ran through, we're asking for a modification of preliminary plan because of the simplicity of the project. We're asking for a modification of survey monuments. What we're proposing is the surveyor, when they did their survey, set two magnails to the rear of the property. It's asphalt into, into stone area. That's a more practical solution. And in the front of the property on Manor Street, we're showing the monuments at a four-foot offset from the property line because the building will be placed to the property line, but there are existing encroachments from the neighboring properties. There's a fence to the south and an existing stoop to the north that would prohibit us from setting monuments, like right at the property corner locations. And then the other modifications are related to the Crystal Street frontage. We're asking for a modification of curbing, which is required along city streets. But Crystal Avenue doesn't have curbing either side to connect to. We're also asking for a modification of sidewalks on Crystal Avenue for the same justification. There are no sidewalks with which to connect, and it would all be depressed sidewalk anyway for the purpose of the parking area. And then, as I mentioned before, we're asking for a modification for a street tree on Crystal Avenue with the condition that we pay a fee in lieu of. And the conditions of approval, as recommended by the city, we've reviewed, and those conditions are acceptable if the Planning Commission recommends approval. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have.
I might have missed this. Is there a parking requirement, off-street parking requirement?
There is. So for, in this case, there's only two parking spaces required. For homeless shelters, it's one parking space per 40 rooms and then one parking space per, I think, 250 square feet of office space. So we're, we need one parking space for the rooms that we have, and then one parking
You said four trees. Did you say you can provide four trees?
Oh, no. So once, well, one street tree is required for each street frontage. So we're proposing one street tree on Manor Street, and then we're not providing a tree on Crystal, so we would pay a fee in lieu of that tree.
Okay.
So a fee in lieu of one tree.
Mr. Chairman, city staff recommends approving the final land development plan for 759 Manor Street and granting the requested modification and waiver subject to the following conditions. The final plan and related construction document. You see here, this, these comments is related to previous question about the construction document. The final plan and related construction document must comply with the city codes and standard unless specifically waived or modified by the city. The developer shall enter into a final land development, developer agreement with the city. All easement agreement and developer agreement shall be submitted for review by the, shall be reviewed and recorded as part of the final plan recordation. The cost estimate or OPC shall be updated and accepted by the city. The developer shall pay in lieu of all required tree that are not planted. The developer shall submit a financial guarantee in accordance with their approved opinion of probable cost. The developer shall address to the city satisfaction all unsatisfied comments per review letter dated September 28th. The developer shall secure approval of the historical commission.
I'm just curious. Do we have a copy of that letter from September 28th? What's the letter from September 28th? Do we have?
The letter?
Yeah.
This is the city staff and CS Davidson review letter.
Do we have a copy of that? Do we have a copy of that?
I can share that copy with you, yeah, after the meeting, yeah.
And we have the comment from the commissioners. So who is the organization that's running this building?
Community Basics will be the owner. Lisa, do you want to speak? Lauren, do you want to speak to the operation?
Just curious about that.
Hi, I'm Lisa Greener, the executive director for Community Basics.
I saw it noted that you're the equitable owner.
Correct.
I'm just curious, like, so who is the actual owner of that?
The redevelopment authority of the City of Lancaster.
Oh.
Right now, there's a sales agreement.
Got it.
Thanks. We're affiliated with ourselves, and we are gonna partner with Valley Youth House to provide the life skills training.
You said Valley who? Valley?
Valley Youth House.
Youth House.
Yes, they've been around for over 50 years and providing services for homeless youth.
Just out of curiosity, could you tell us a little bit more about that organization? Because I do not know much of them.
They started out in Bethlehem and have been filtering out throughout the state. They do have some services provided right now with Lancaster. They are starting their homeless outreach. They also work in York and Philadelphia and just...
Could you compare their, like, their mission, their values to other organizations?
It's very similar to ours, other than that they provide the services where we provide the actual structure.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think it's a great project. I'm happy to see it going forward.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve with the waivers requested and the conditions set forth by the city.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ready for the question? All in favor? Let it known by saying aye.
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 Aye. Hearing none. Eyes have it. Motion carried.
Thank you.
So it's a redevelopment authority? Any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, as I abstain from voting on that last matter, may I just recommend, I believe, some draining for the commission as to how the process moves forward might be of value for future matters of this nature. Just to, you know, where it goes after it goes to Planning Commission and what options they have.
Yes, as someone who maybe caused that problem, I would, I would appreciate it. And I think it also would be useful to illustrate for the public, too. Because I think they think the Planning Commission might have a little bit more powers than perhaps we actually have.
I think, I think there's a, honestly, and this is probably not the right forum for it, but I think there's a really great disconnect in the development process with the public in general. And so it's very hard not being educated in it to, to know it. So I think that having some better education on our side would help us make decisions
Have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. You have a motion on the floor? You have a second? All in favor? Let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at 6:54. Adjourned.